Good evening, everyone. I'm Juan for the meeting of the New York Public School Committee for Monday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Lucille, will you please call the roll?
Mary Holliday.
Present.
Ryan Callahan.
Here.
Steve Cole.
Here.
David Popizer.
Here.
Ryan Booth Mennett.
Here.
Tewa Spalding.
Here.
Sean Rieth.
Yeah.
All present. Two weekly stand. I'm saying.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And also, Mr. Carroll, the answer to our public comment.
Why thank you, there. Um, we're gonna enter into the public comment section of the meeting. Um, as always, we say your name and address. Uh, we keep your comments in two minutes. We, uh, if you don't identify your own child, if you're talking about schools, and please, uh, remember that it's a public forum and everybody should conduct themselves as nicely as possible. Tewa Spalding, since you'd be letting in public commenters tonight, because it's just too much to run the meeting and those things, so if anybody has a public comment, please raise your hands on Zoom. Do you have any hands? Who's calling?
Yes. Jay Snow. Hello, Jay.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just have a question, but I'm not sure it'll, you could probably answer it later in the meeting. When I'm looking at your packet and I'm on the budget process, there is an, a request for two Spanish teachers, and it was moved to the priority list. Um, is that in addition to the two teachers that were hired last year? And if not, um, I'm just was curious what happened, because I, I was under the impression last year they approved two teachers also. So when you get to that point, if you could share with me that answer, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, Bill?
There's a few people that joined. Would anybody else like to make public comment? Raise.
All right, we'll see none. I guess we can close up the public comment section of the meeting. Mr. Cole, with any set consent agenda?
If we have three warrants. First warrant, I move that the following name bills of the different four public schools are not going to give the aggregate one thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? There are none. We're gonna roll, hold up, please.
Mary Holliday.
Yes.
Ryan Callahan.
Yes.
Steve Cole.
Yes.
Steve Popizer.
Yes.
Booth Mennett.
Yes.
Tewa Spalding.
Yes.
Sean Rieth.
Yes. Do we have to do the roll call votes? Since we're now in person. I thought that was just if you were online. Great. Ryan, you got the night off. Why are we doing, doing sort of like a big poll? Yeah, we are in person, yes. All right, great, thanks. Are we gonna retake that vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next warrant, I move that the following name bills and payrolls of the different four public schools mounting in the aggregate fifteen thousand two hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Here. Uh.
One more, one more warrant. I move that the following name bills of the new report public schools not in the aggregate four hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Any discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Passes. That was a lot of votes. That will do about that. And we have two, um, minutes from February second, which is an amendment to the previously, um, read minutes, and then from, I'm sorry, February first and from March first.
We accept the minute was amended on, uh, February first, or target.
Second.
All fair?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. The minutes pass. Uh, I get a motion for the March first minute.
Roll move. Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Those minutes also pass. Great. Uh, next, we have the NHS Student Rep Report with Sierra Lady.
Last week, our theater program was in action with their production of arsenic and old ways. The show was live streamed on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. This was a tremendous undertaking. Students wore microphones under their masks during the broadcast, and the live streaming equipment was managed by the students. Viewers commented on the professionalism of virtual production. I want to say kudos to everyone who's involved in the show. Fall season two is in action. Volleyball is one and one, and the first football game was played at home on Friday against Hamilton West. The final score was forty-one to twenty-one in favor of the Clippers. Track continues to get ready for their first scene of the season. We're hopeful all three teams will follow suit to the dominant shown in the fall and winter season by our team. This Wednesday, the high school purchase breaks the movie version of Just Mercy. Students will receive a link from the school on Wednesday morning, and this will give students access to the film all day on Wednesday. During next week's Clipper Walk, students will be able to compare and contrast the book and film version. Additionally, through the work of Lynn Cody, Anthony Ray Hinton will be speaking to all students in late March during March thirtieth Clipper Walk. Mr. Hinton was on death row for thirty years, and he is one of many death row inmates Brian Stevens and Chris Innocent. In Just Mercy, Brian Stevenson talks about Mr. Hinton's case in one of the chapters. This virtual event will be available to all of our students and any community members who wants to join. Mrs. Cody will be advertising it later this week. This opportunity will further support the work schools are doing to engage students in meaningful dialogue around racism, bias, and discrimination. I want to commend Luca Bryan, who's a sophomore at the high school. Since last summer, he has organized a program called Peer Share. Through the foundation he started, he collects new or lightly used sports equipment for those who can't afford it. Last week, he was featured on WCDB Channel Five for the work he's taken on. Last summer, he built a truckload of equipment. He's planning on, he's planning the next draft to happen in his spring. Also very exciting, Jacob Robertson has been selected as the male recipient of the Monahan Lumber Student Athlete of the Month. Jacob was selected as the twenty-twenty-one Boys Basketball Team League Player of the Year, and this new recognition demonstrates his commitment in the classroom alongside his athletic skills. Congratulations to Jacob.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody have any questions, Ryan?
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Superintendent Gallagher with the FY two budget update. The law was reading to you, so if you are good and the lights.
That screen's not really being picked up on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But this, uh, he's gonna share, we're gonna do a double.
Okay, great.
Yeah. We're gonna break that one.
Oh shit.
Yep, looks good.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much. I'm here to present, uh, some of the budget work that we've been doing along with our full and person reopening and adjusting a lot of the, uh, challenges and regulations the last couple of weeks, so, um, this PowerPoint is really talking points, a lot of the information you have already, uh, that Nancy Lysek has provided, um, and kind of where we're at. So as we really focus, you know, the port where tradition and innovation converge, and I think for us, um, we've really relied on the great tradition, the great pride of this community, at the same time, being innovative and flexible to change. So I'm just really, uh, I think this mission has really been so important to us over the past year, um, for the entire community. We never want to lose sight of that. And then once again, our four areas that we're really looking at with our budget, social emotional health as students are returning back, curriculum instruction assessment, and instead of saying the learning loss, because that's where we're looking at some of our preliminary data, um, it's really assessing, I think, student growth. Uh, we were, as we said, one of the two districts that opened up in a hybrid model and maintained that throughout, um, so we're really proud of the work that we have done, but this is something that we're gonna continue to analyze and develop intervention plans when needed. Our strategic, strategic plan initiatives, a couple of the big aspects with world language and the college career pathways, and then our instructional technology and communication. As we all know, it's one lesson that we've learned throughout this year, is really to enhance our technology and curriculum delivery, at the same time how important it is to communicate with families. So these, um, aspects, you'll see within the budget, as we said the last time, um, I presented. So we kind of do an organizational chart and how this all kind of fits in. Mr. Hawkeye, uh, it was a great idea to bring, bring this forward, um, at our last meeting. Um, and as you can see, the very important, some of the, um, aspects that we're looking to do, so we've separated out, uh, the Director of Communications and Instructional Technology, and that person only is working and looking to enhance technology within the curriculum delivery, but also would oversee, uh, our tech integrators, technology department, and then work side by side with the Assistant Superintendent. The other piece that we feel is really important is the communication aspect of this, uh, working with all building principals in the district to have, uh, not only ongoing communications, but consistent communication for the district. Behavioral Health Corner, we feel, uh, extremely important. On the Behavioral Health Coordinator, especially when we're looking at, uh, the social emotional health of our students that have come in that fully, will work under the Director of People's Services, but the Behavioral Health Coordinator will coordinate all of our programming, um, from pre-K all the way to the high school, uh, therapeutic programs, uh, social workers, judgment counselors, wraparound services for families, um, working with the home for little wanderers, and it's just a, we feel a really important aspect as we're coming into next year. The other piece we are looking to do is coordinate, um, our literacy, uh, so our pre-K, the five literacy coordinator, which we have already existing in the budget, and we will look to separate, uh, the six to twelve literacy coordinator up. I'm gonna break this down, um, uh, in the next few slides that you'll see, but.
Present quick question, Sean?
Yes.
There's still gonna be a STEM coordinator?
No, this is, uh, reallocating that position. So we still have, um, then STEM coordinate, uh, STEM integration within the school.
Yeah.
But the district-wide STEM coordinator, we're reallocating that to the Director of Communications and Instructional Technology.
Okay.
Get my little arrows all over again. That's why we need Director of Technology. So, um, one, we're gonna, as I said, we're gonna break these down, uh, in further slides, but, uh, we, by the increase, uh, to the, from the city, um, to a four point percent, a four percentage, uh, revenue, um, and that's, you know, ongoing and, and Mayor Holliday and the city, as we're seeing, uh, the different funding that's coming in, uh, we'll see how the next stimulus package, uh, that was just approved by the federal government, uh, how that's gonna impact both cities and towns and also the school system. So we do anticipate additional revenue coming into the system, so that's something that we're excited to have, um, as we move forward. As you can see, from where we were, um, in February to where we are now, I think we were in, will be further slides to break this down, we were born a one point four million dollar shortfall, um, but with different revenue sources and, and the city allocation increase, um, and some of the work that we've done over the past couple of weeks, we are now down to about a three hundred ninety-three thousand dollar shortfall, which is not too bad, kind of where we're at right now and where we were earlier. You've received this information, and we kind of talked about this, um, this is the priority list of what we need right now, you, um, as we, what we feel that we need. And then we'll, we'll go through this in a little, little bit more detail, but as you learn from our, uh, preliminary overview, the staffing increases, uh, was about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support, and we utilized some ESSA grants, and then we also developed, decided to develop our priority list. These next few slides kind of breaks it down a little bit more. So, on February twenty-second, we had, as I said, about a one point four million dollar, um, overview, uh, preliminary budget increase, uh, revenue increases, so city appropriation increased by two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Our school tuition, um, and this is the strategy that we anticipate, we usually anticipate a lower N, um, and working with Nancy, we had an increase in our school tuition to over forty-nine thousand dollars. And then our school fund balance, that's school choice, uh, we were able to allocate more funding towards the budget of two hundred thousand dollars for a total of five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So as we started to break down the priority list, um, so we, we moved off to the side, uh, it's still in the budget, it's still, uh, discussion, uh, but grade six, uh, world language teachers at a hundred thirty thousand dollars, grade six to twelve literacy coordinator, we moved off to, uh, priority one list at eighty thousand dollars for a total of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. In the previous budget, we were looking to increase, uh, instructional and assistance, uh, two of them are there for thirty-one, uh, four twenty-five, working with Nancy Fox, uh, teach chairs and analyzing our programming. At this time, we feel, uh, we do not need those additions, so that was another savings around sixty-two thousand dollars. And then with this operational budget that we have in place right now, um, we allocating funds and savings in other areas, um, we're able to, um, add a point five payroll at twenty thousand dollars, as Mr. Hawkeye just says, with the restructuring of the district-wide STEM coordinator, reallocating an additional, uh, twenty thousand dollars for that position. And then the Behavioral Health Coordinator is coming out of the ESSA grant, half of that salary, uh, is fifty thousand dollars, so that was a savings of ninety thousand dollars.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, knowing that at this point we've got about a four hundred thousand dollar tax crack that we're still short, um, if you were to add that in priority one, what does that expand the shortfall? What are you looking for?
Well, you would add that two hundred and ten thousand to that overall shortfall.
Okay, so we're looking at about six hundred and twenty-five thousand. We're still trying to make that.
Still trying to make that. And we still have a lot of work to do. This is, this is ongoing, um, as we continue to, um, go through our budget, and also still waiting for some news regarding, uh, you know, what the state's gonna be providing. Um. So the next slide, so we, working with our schools, the president in Monmouth, not the high school curriculum supplies, so we could move some of these supplies over to the ESSA grant, um, but just want to reiterate, we're not, um, decimating our school supplies and materials. So this is, uh, very, uh, comfortable in the sense with the principals and the administration looking, uh, for reductions in supplies and materials, uh, so with that, we're at a hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred and seven dollars, um, of savings there. And as we said, we, if you also recall, the ESSA grant in the original, uh, budget, we were saving allocating around two hundred thousand dollars of expenses we haven't paid for, because remember that's a two-year grant, so there is some funding there, um, that we can, as Mr. Mennett said, as we do our, uh, budget deliberations and budget work, we take all those pieces into consideration. So really, uh, just a quick overview of summary budget and work on the deliberation up to this point, um, as we said, we're about one point four million dollars, uh, over. We increased the revenue when you look at those, uh, three items that we talked about by about a half a million dollars. Our priority list, along with reallocating, um, and redistributing our funding, um, was around three hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, and then our reduction in supplies and materials at a hundred thirty-two. So we've, you can see the work that we've done, uh, around a million dollars with the city allocating more funding along with us developing priority lists and, uh, utilizing our funds and really repurposing those to meet the needs, uh, as we head into the school next year. And that's where we started, and after a couple of weeks, uh, this is where we're at, um, and we're gonna continue with our deliberations and continue with our work. And, uh, um, there was reporting, we're very proud of our theater department, they awesome job, uh, live streaming, and that's kind of the work and kind of the overview where we're at right now with our budget. And we also do have Nancy Lysek on the line, oh, in, in the Zoom world. There you go.
Um, I, I don't know if this is a question for you or an answer of both of you, but can you talk a little bit about, uh, decisions to move the three positions to priority one? Sort of thinking it like that?
Yeah, I think that, uh, working with the, um, our building principals and looking at the priorities of, of focusing on, I think, a lot of the intervention, the social emotional, the planning for, um, grade six language could be put off if we had to for a year, and the same with our, um, literacy coordinators. But really, we're trying to balance the budget on the person that we have right now, um, so that's kind of where we're at. So as we're working with the principals, we have to delay some of those initiatives. Those are the two areas that we, we felt that we could put on a priority one list, but as we know, um, the budget's fluctuating, um, we're not sure what the one point nine trillion dollar stimulus is gonna have for schools, uh, but it's on that list, um, for us to, you know, continue to keep on there and continue to, to work through.
Yeah. So the ESSA is a two-year grant, so you anticipating using that to pay some of the salary next year, too?
Correct.
For your health.
Yeah.
For year three, though, we've gotta find.
Correct. So that's the one thing that we're working on is, you don't want to utilize your grant money for staffing, because once the grant money is used up, so when we're looking at the behavioral health, we felt, uh, part of the LEA is half of that salary for this year, which is fifty thousand dollars, and the other half through the ESSA. And as we develop our budget for when it's the next year, it's a lot easier to increase that staffing as a phased-in approach.
Is something more question? Uh, so the other question is, can you just talk a little bit more about what that six twelve literacy coordinator looks like? And I just, I don't typically see that for six twelve, like, you know, I usually see that in, you know, because you're, hopefully at that point, you're, you are, you know, reading to learn, um, is that like a humanities position, or is that strictly just literacy for, for grade six twelve?
It's gonna be, it's really gonna be for literacy, but it's also gonna incorporate, I think, overall writing and reading, uh, throughout the district and help align a lot normally, a lot of our curriculum, but also, we foresee that, uh, the district is also coaching literacy also. Yeah, so that's, um, and there is a need, I think, um, I think it's, you know, Emily Russen does an amazing job, we really want her to focus on the early literacy, um, but we also want to make sure that the middle school is also supported, uh, with a lot of the literacy work, but really coordinating, uh, all grade in, you know, probably social studies, just all overall writing and literacy is what we're gonna be focused on.
I mean, I would think that as, as you continue with your standard-based curriculum, having kids being able to read about content and then write about content more independently and more often would help differentiate and grow that.
Correct. It's a system, it, it's more, as you, as you know, Dave, that the, uh, the high school level and the secondary level, it's more of a systematic approach on how to teach only the reading, but also the writing, you know, uh, open response, you know, answers, ten percent summaries, argumentative essay, but not just focused in one, in one area. Really looking at six to twelve and how all the educators can support the writing.
That's helping people integrate that into their, uh, practice.
Correct.
That's okay. I also think it's great that there's an coordinator. I have more of a concern with the reduction in supplies and materials, because it seems like this is a year where parents and families may not be able to contribute as much money to supplies and materials, so how will we make sure that we're not passing that on?
Yeah, well, that's the, that's why anytime you start looking at reductions, that's our number one, we don't want to be adding more costs to families.
Right.
Um, so we're really comfortable with some of those cuts that we did in the operational budget that would be able to, uh, phase in with some of the ESSA funding to help support the supplies and materials. Yes.
Um, could you talk a little bit about, we, I thought had, um, really solid present, series of presentations from the school and their school faculty two weeks ago, and, for example, the high school talked about differentiated instruction in year point two, point five. Could you talk about how those presentations and the needs of all four schools have been integrated into this budget or not?
Yes, so some of those, uh, it, as we go back, some of those, uh, we reallocated our own operational budget, uh, funding, uh, with that. So one of the biggest, I think, for us, as we're looking at curriculum instruction assessment, it's, it's kind of like two-folded. It's one, uh, making sure all students, right, are on, on task to continue going into next year, but also provide the support for the other students that might need a little more support in integration. So with, with that, you see in our budget, interventionist supporting, um, a lot of that work that the principals were talking about at the turn of the presentation, the school movement. So this is, all of that is still in there, but we, we started to utilize and reallocate our staffing and also working on the infrastructure programming, you know, really taking a harder look at, can we do some of this with our own operational budget that we have in existence by reallocating these sources? So all of those, the interventionist is still in there at the moment, the high school increase, um, the point one, the point two is still in our operational budget, um, so it's, it's that ongoing work and deliberations that we have with principals, you know, uh, every week to get to that. Bottom line is, we want to present a, uh, balanced budget, um, and that's, this is how we're chipping away at that. And some of those, uh, preliminary, everything we asked for, we can postpone if we need to, to follow in here.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that certainly we have to give these two back at the end of the year, you said that was the leadership team, okay, it's the biggest back to the money that was allocated helping to improve it and we end up doing something to the allocation this year. And that's just something that I haven't seen here, clearly often happen.
Well, and I think that, you know, for some of the reallocating and repurposing positions, the need, you know, with the, the assistance superintendent, they're going to be overseeing a lot of the math curriculum, a lot of science curriculum. They can pick up a, a lot of that work. At the same time, we really feel we need a need of instructional technology communication. I mean, that's, so that's that part of, you know, what are the needs as we're moving in? And can we utilize some of our resources that are already built into the budget to meet the needs going into next year? We felt that, that's one piece that, that we do, the principals do, really looking at our programming and, you know, if we make tweaks here and there, if we reallocate, can we make the programming stronger as well?
I guess the question I had was that, I'm hoping that guidelines for new ESSER funding has money come in before Nancy Lysick expires. Because if, if anybody can figure out how to make use of that most fun, she's going to be able to do that. It's just hard to imagine that there, if anything left in the budget to shift.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. And, and, you know, we'll see with, you know, you, you hear rumors, so you don't, we haven't, as the mayor knows, we haven't seen the numbers yet. And I don't know if it's going to be, sometimes when you receive money in grants, they make you jump through hoops on how you're going to spend it, what you can spend it on. From my understanding, it's going to really allow, I think, leadership teams, cities in town to have a little bit more leeway on the needs of every individual district in town.
I serve on the board of a nonprofit and we're struggling with that this round that is coming out now. Lots more flexibility in the district.
Correct. And going back to Mr. Riden's question, it's, so as you're planning our two to three years, you really don't want to just utilize a lot of that funds on staffing because of that. So it's really like a phased-in, all right, if, if we're going to use some money for staffing, are we going to see that position for, you know, one year or two years? Or can we use some of that money and then phase in as part of this future budget plan?
That gives us, gives us the time to jack out hard numbers.
Correct.
In the future, two years, three years down the road.
Exactly. I mean, and I think with the personnel that we have, like Nancy Koch and other central office personnel and Nancy Lysick and, you know, and Angel Art, who are very cognizant of that funding and really making sure we're not putting all this staff in for a year or two and all of a sudden the funds run out. Now you're laying people off, so the systematic approach.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Very welcome. And we'll keep coming back and giving budget updates and, you know, until you see the, the big budget book and all the line items and how it all plays out once we get to where we're at.
All right, I know it's just a fraction, but we had the discussion about choice and structure.
Oh, yeah. We can, we can put that on the, the next agenda if that's all right with everybody.
It's like we're going to be able to open up additional seats. We want to be the first to manage it. I think we're just going to include the moment for right again.
Yeah.
Next up, we have the special education student learning update.
Hello, everyone. So the first thing that I want to update you on is bringing back the high needs to the special education students and those students identified by the administration who would also need to return earlier than the entire school community. So as of last Monday, Brezner Hand students returned and they are back in the building, all students on IP's and additional students that were identified by the administration. They've been coming in now four days a week and have rejoined their classrooms. Mullen will be coming back the twenty-ninth, they, no, the twenty-second, they will be returning. And then all students in Brezner Hand and Mullen will be returning on April fifth. So that's everybody in, in the building. And Knox IDC class, which is a substantially separate classroom for students with multiple learning needs and health needs. They will also be coming back on April fifth. And they will then be in the building five days with an early release on Wednesday. Knox will be bringing back their special education students, all of them, and any other students that the administration has identified needing to come back on March twenty-second. They will also be in just four days. And then on April twenty-sixth, all students at Knox will be in five days a week. So that's the update on the return. Any questions?
How did that first week go at the Brezner?
Amazingly well, and everybody was very happy to have them back and they were happy to be back. So it went very nicely. Yeah? So, and then the building administrators will be joining the CPAC meeting April seventh. And they will be sharing their transition plans and activities for students who will be changing levels. And not added levels meaning from pre-K to kindergarten, third grade to fourth, you know, building changes, so to speak. And they will be talking about the global plans that will be done for all students and then plans that will be done for special, for certain special education, various opportunities for certain special education students will also be shared that evening. And then we, it's hard to believe, but summer is almost upon us. So we are starting to plan our ESY programming. Program coordinators are gathering a list of all students who would be eligible for summer programming to prevent the regression of skills. And COVID impact compensatory services will also be addressed during the summer. And then the last piece of news is we have contacted with Ann Lawson from Landmark Outreach. And she will be working with myself and the district to, as building administrators and teachers to further develop and enhance the language-based programming. And we're very excited starting this spring.
Thank you. Nancy, is that a change with the Knox then? On the presentation we had last meeting, it said April twelfth would be the first time for four days with Wednesday. Is that now not happening and now it won't be until after vacation and then it'll be five days?
Five days for all of the students. Yeah, for all students, it'll be the twenty-second.
So Knox and Mullen on, on March twenty-second will be back to four days. So not students, regular students won't be back until after vacation. That's changed. So there's a change?
No.
You're talking special education.
Right, but, but.
The plan is, April fifth, right, Brezner Hand and Mullen are in for five days. And then on the twelfth, all the off, sixth, seventh, eighth are in for four days.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. And then, but everybody will be back five days if not, yeah, sorry. Any other questions?
Can you remind me what ESY stands for?
Extended School Year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great, thank you very much. Nancy, good work. All right, we're going to do some calendar modifications. Superintendent's going to talk about that. Superintendent, I just want to ask, there were a lot of questions about, you know, the eight or ten Wednesday early release and how that works. Know, but how the state calculates hours in school and all those, can you clarify that on the goal?
All right. So the, this is, this is, what version is this one? So a couple, a couple pieces here is with five days in person, as we said, and the state requires a full day for elementary, it's five hours per day for a total hours of twenty-five hours per week. Our plan has our students in the elementary for six hours, and that's the student learning time, that's taking out lunch and, and all of that. So six hours of instructional time on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then a four hour, that's why we say it's a modified early release and it's not your traditional early release because we are gaining some of the student learning time with students receiving lunch on the way out, a bad lunch on the way out, which gives our teachers a little more time in preparation and a P-day that we feel is going to be essential for planning and really working and identifying, I think, individual child study teams will be up and running, will be able to be working with all students, gives us a little extra time each week to really dedicate to our students, you know, five oh fours, programming. And that's all part of our plan. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. So it's five, it's five full, it's five in-person days with a four-hour early release on that Wednesday. Yeah.
Just to clarify, showing the state is requiring twenty-five hours of daytime.
Correct.
We're going to be providing twenty-eight hours.
Correct.
But the plan is full.
Correct.
Yes, so we're going to be exceeding what the state is expecting.
Correct. And that's, and that's also, you know, as part of our follow-up before we released our plans, obviously, we checked with the state and the authorities and making sure. But we'll also submit our plans to the state for that final approval, so. That's what we've done. And we just really believe it's just, you know, really focusing on how they're not students coming back. And it's not even students technically, it's all students because it's a big adjustment. It's already a big adjustment, even for the students at Brezner Hand from having a class of eight while it's on a class of fifteen. So we're already seeing we're bringing students back by increasing the classes that you're really re-teaching all of the, the protocols. They haven't even been into lunchroom yet at the elementary school. So for us, it gives us an opportunity to have our child study team really just focusing on the individual students and really focus on grade level and giving our teachers time in preparation of the summer school programming for all students and also putting things in place so students don't fall through the cracks as they're all coming back to school. And for the, the state, they, they thought our plan was pretty good. And as I said, we'll, we'll submit our plan officially and then we'll get work, work back. But that's how it all works. It's five hours instructional time per day. And some schools are maintaining a five-day, just five hours and, and that's all they're doing. We're really expanding that a little bit, so.
Can you tell us what the, the specific times are that the schools?
Yes. So right now, we would go, the Knox-Mullen is seven forty-five to eleven forty-five with a bad lunch for the students on the way out. Nancy, our teacher will be able to feed all of our students on the way out on this day. Our high school is eight fifteen to twelve fifteen. And then the Brezner Hand is eight twenty to twelve twenty. If you all recall, with late start, we needed that. So this all fits into our late start programming and busing. Remember, the thirteen buses will be going to Knox-Mullen first, then they have a break and then we split. And one of the benefits of late start is the high school students will have their own bus, buses, and then the Brezner Hand students will have their own buses. And we're not sharing or having students, if you recall, before late start, we would have Mullen students waiting on the bus for ten to fifteen, twenty minutes sometime. But now we're not sharing any buses. So this, we're following the same format for the four-hour modified early release.
Nancy, the other part was the March early release, just got moved to the Friday before the war, but?
Yeah, so this was, as we talked about, I think, at our last school committee meeting, the Good Friday, we moved that to the twenty-eighth. And then we also are going to have that Wednesday because now we'll be back five days in person. So it's going to be a lot easier once everyone's in, in the routine to have that early release on the twenty-eighth. So it's, it'll be that, the twenty-sixth won't be an early release. That Wednesday will be now the twenty-eighth.
So basically, we're hoping to move on early release day from May twenty-eighth and accept these modified early release days to the last from April seventh onwards.
Yeah.
Move. Hey, discussion? All moves in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Passes you now. The shortest, shortest expression I've ever remembered. All right. Next, we have clarification on some of our fundraising policies. About what document was in the last packet. For that, I'm going to let, let you involve it, take over.
Yes, so I, I'm not sure how to proceed with this. Do I make a motion to retract that for these votes? Apparently, our second reading was on the incorrect document. It wasn't the same document we passed with, we read with the first reading. So today is the packet, we have the correct documents. And we need to have a clarifying vote. Today being the second reading, so that we have it on record that passing the correct documents.
Right down there.
Exactly, so do I retract the vote?
Did we note on the right thing for the first reading?
We did.
Okay.
We did, so it's just the second reading. You know, one of the, one of, in our defense, one of the policies, we had, two of them had the same name and we're renaming one. So it kind of got a little confusing, but we fixed that.
Do you want to move?
Okay. But I'm asking, should this motion be clarified, or should I make a motion first to retract?
This is an update.
Okay.
Policy.
Okay, okay. So I would like to move to take a clarified vote on the second reading of the fundraising document, KHA fundraising policy, Public Gifts to the School Policy, KTV. and the crowd crowdfunding policy, K D E T D.
A move.
Second. All who's in favor?
Um, I.
I'm sorry, discussion, sorry. Fine. Sorry.
I would prefer individual votes on each of these, because I'm not gonna support public gifts to schools. So, I would, I would ask for individual votes on each of these. And I'm happy to share my perspective if there's discussion. Can I get?
Let's roll one of the topics.
One of the topics.
Okay, so I move to have the fundraising policy, the second reading, K H A.
I mean, a second, right? Okay. A discussion on fundraising policy, K H A. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Done, pass. Okay, B.
And I move to, to clarify and pass the public gift to the school policy, K C D.
Any discussion?
Yes. Um, yeah, I don't intend to support this. I raised a number of concerns with this policy at the, when I was at the politics meeting. And none of the answers I really got made me feel any more comfortable about it. So, the concerns that I have are that, um, I think, um, although no extent of advertising and promotion may be involved, many donations without school committee approval, um, I, again, that, I, I just would need that to be a little bit more clear. You know, are we gonna go back and take names off of things that are already there? Just simply go forward? How, how does naming something in honor of a person, having their name put on a gym or a Wilbrook Stadium, how does that get affected? And then the next thing is, I guess, that would involve changes in school plants or sites would be subject to school committee approval. My question is, are we talking about physical changes to the plant? Are we talking about renaming the plant? What changes are we talking about? So, um, and then the third one is gifts will automatically become property of the school system. Any gift of cash, whether or not intended by the donor, will be accepted by the school committee. So, does that then mean that every time the P T O donates, we have to approve? Um, if somebody wants to donate ten bucks a month as a nonprofit manager, I often had people doing that every month, we're gonna have to approve that? I just, I just, it's not, it doesn't strike me as particularly clear. And those are the questions I have, I'm not trying to convince anybody not to vote for it, I'm not voting for it for those reasons. And I share those with you. Yep.
Mayor.
Well, I think we should hold this one there. Um, you know, I think this is really important, and I think that we need to have consensus of the, the school committee to do this. And if it's not clear, then I think we got a problem. And I would recommend that just go back to policies, take a look at it, and just address those couple outstanding questions that we didn't have.
We have to put them right in the policy.
I think policy would be happy to go back and continue to update this, but I just wanna note that if we do nothing, the pieces of the policy that you're, you have issue with still stand, because those, that's language that's been there.
Right.
We didn't change, we didn't write any of that.
Right, and, and my feeling is we have the opportunity now to do that.
Your meaning. Next week, right, two weeks.
Um, the twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
So, can we pass this thing that we will add to the suggested minutes, or that we can do that?
No.
Okay.
That's not that. We could vote on it, just so you, we could vote on it. Yeah, we could vote on it, it might not pass, but we could vote on it.
Okay.
I agree with Mayor, though, I think it's.
Or we could hold it.
We could wait. Write it away. May, yeah, maybe a better, a better way of writing it.
Yeah, I just, sort of, what Mr. Man said, the language around, uh, changes to school plans. Uh, I guess it's been my experience that gifts shouldn't be directing that, or shouldn't be the, uh, the, the impetus for change rather. So, I mean, I, and it still falls within the school committee curfew, but I mean, I just, uh, I think there's some, I think we need to be careful around that language as well.
So, do we move to table it, then?
Can I ask some clarifying questions to people? When, when we're concerned about the changes in school plants or sites, do we want, like, examples of what that might mean?
Yeah, I could, it's powerful.
Okay.
I could give you an example. I mean, a, a number of years ago, the school committee voted to, and it's not exactly, uh, but we voted to basically approve the solar panel, uh, array on top of this building, and while it didn't involve naming, it was just an example of how any changes to the plant occur, so.
That wasn't a gift, though, so that wouldn't fall.
No, but, but I don't think, I don't think a gift should be driving change like that. So, I, I guess what I'm looking for is to differentiate when, when, because there are changes that come to the plant, there are changes that come to the facility, they're not always involved with gifts. So, I, I'm just, some clarification between those two things.
Sheila, Sheila, you're taking notes, so I just asked you to mark, like, that we should reference the, uh.
Yes.
There is a whole section on. That's updated, so, that aren't gifts.
I will get that.
And I also, I just wanna, I did talk to the lawyer when we were first going through this, and we, we talked about potentially, like, a dollar value delineation. So, like, Mr. Man, I think you're correct, if somebody wanted to give ten dollars to, you know, the literacy fund or something like that, that wouldn't come to us. But they, like, any gift over five thousand dollars would be approved, which it does talk about up top.
Well, it talks about in reference to organizations, it doesn't talk about it in reference to individuals. At least that's how I read it. You know, again, I, I, I literally, when I was running a fellowship, that I had people who were on very fixed incomes donate five dollars, ten dollars a month, every month. My question is, what, what does that mean, if we have to approve that? No dollar amount to that, and yet to prove it, we're gonna, could be spending a chunk of time approving listed donations every month, but we might not have to prove if, uh, policy was, like, more sharply delineated.
So, if, if we took the words from roots out of there and just said, any gifts or offers of money over five thousand dollars?
Um, I would rather have it discussed by the full policy.
I'm just asking if that's.
That might be, that might be an option, I need to take a look at it.
Fair hold.
I think five thousand is too high. I think that it should be lower number, that, uh, the school committee should be involved in this. I don't know what that magic number is, but I think it's five thousand is enough. And, uh, I think that we should, um, have the approving process for, um, some number later, it's two thousand fifteen, and I don't know what the number is, but we literally don't wanna be approved at five, ten dollars, or five dollars.
So, I, so I think that, and then, you know, there's, um, you know, there's, there's a, you could also draw a bright line between what we have to approve and what we have to notify about.
Correct.
So, you know, we could put in language that says, up to X amount, the school committee is notified, over X amount, the school committee. That, that would be a way to, I think.
Yeah.
It's not similar to the, uh, talking to get in budget, that we just wanna know that it's happening.
Right.
Superintendent, is it possible to take a look back a few years and see what sort of gifts we're getting and, and recognize that they're outside of N E F, P T O, or the alumni association? Those were, those are excluded as a fundraising world for us, if they take their own. So, I'm curious, like, what, what kind of things we, we do get.
All right, Brian, I'm gonna switch this off.
We have some parents within the K G A N league, uh, that were, really wanted, like, the full in-person for all spectators back. And as the school committee received, uh, our communication with phasing that in after the outdoor report, we game under our belts, allow the A Ds, uh, to really want it to that. It's gotta look different in every district, because we're all so different. So, some capacities in visiting schools, uh, might be a little bit less than very forth, but game one, as Sierra was talking about, the football went very well. Uh, and I, Kyle Hudson's gonna be adding, I think, more, uh, fans to the mix in the safest way. And then indoor sports right now, um, for volleyball, I think it's seniors, uh, senior parents first, and then he's gonna be adding more, uh, spectators and parents to the home, home field, so. Uh, now, that's what they're running, a very similar approach we took for fall sports, uh, along with winter sport. Couple games of the adult, and then see how the facilities work, make sure your protocols are in place, and then start bringing, uh, more spectators then. The, uh.
Show him this, if I should have that?
Yes.
How about J V sports?
I think it's, I mean, I think right now what they're looking at, um, is the, when you have, uh, two home games, you have the J V parents come in, then the varsity parents come in afterwards. I think it's the cleaning protocols in between that, uh, we have to get in check. But I do anticipate, uh, underclassmen parents for home games and the indoors coming in. So, we're just gonna have to break parents, uh, for the J Vs and varsity, uh, coming, clean the bleachers, and then allow the next, uh, home, home parent. And I think that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. I'm not sure what, you know, the phasing of that. As you all know, our, just the end cast update, this is, uh, more guidance that we receive or recommendations that we receive. So, uh, the president again had a targeted date, uh, forecast, uh, but right now, the state has changed the dates, and it's T B day, it's great, so we're trying to figure that, that out, working with the state. Mullen, grade four, five, uh, math, uh, E L A is math, and grade five science, um, is gonna be up and running, uh, with the dates. Uh, North is on hold, the state has not released, uh, test dates for grade six to eight. Um, there's been no change for high school, the state still has, uh, slated for E L A and math, the sophomores and juniors anytime right now between May third and June fourth. And then the bio exam for freshmen, uh, can be anytime right now between June first and June eleventh. So, all of the individual principles, uh, once we have those dates, they're communicating with family. Um, but I think that's another concern, not only for, for our region, but throughout the state, but districts and, and that kind of thing. As you're bringing them all back, bringing all students back, then you add another standardized test story. So, I, I know there's been, I think, a lot of talk from the, um, Massachusetts Association of School Committees along with the Massachusetts Association of Brinkhammers, so. That's kind of where we're at for, for end cast.
Are we required to participate in that?
Yes.
Okay. We're trying to, so have you learned?
Yeah, we have.
If, if the state, or parts of the state don't participate, is that, are the consequences of that, that you don't get federal notice?
Yes. You need, uh, that's one of those regulations, the mandates, that, uh, they have to participate in.
So, if there's really gonna be any flexibility coming from it, it's gotta come federally.
It's gotta come from the federal level. So, the federal level would have to, uh, give the state guidance around end cast. So, I, I'm not sure if that's going on right now, I think by them delaying and not giving out specific dates right now, those conversations are probably happening, so. The last piece is, um, working on our, uh, full-in-person return. Uh, Mike Allen, Doctor Two, back with advisory team, has been working and system building principles, walking the building, looking at all the different areas, uh, from the hallways to the cafeteria, the outdoor spaces. Uh, I can't thank them enough. Steve Burkhorn and the custodian are now changing, uh, because we're gonna be utilizing the hallway, uh, for some of the snack time that they consume, and we have to keep the six feet apart when you're eating or drinking. And Steve and his team are working on, uh, you know, adding more, uh, cleaning to the hallways. Uh, Pam Keely and her team is assisting with the lunch setup, the lunch pickup, the organization of all of that. Uh, so I'm just really proud, our teachers' association has been with us from the beginning, working, uh, working off the detail, giving us their ideas, uh, along with our other, uh, associations, our I A's, uh, the pastime, uh, association. So, it's really been all hands-on deck, um, with the planning and bringing our staff full in person. As we said, from day one, that was always our goal, but we just wanna make sure we do it a face-to-face, safe, uh, and, and a healthy way for everybody involved. So, that's some good news there. The other good news, um, is more and more of our educators are getting vaccinated, um, with the work that Sam Holiday did for the regional was very helpful. We have, a lot of the teachers are getting appointments, and a lot of our teachers volunteered to assist. And if you volunteer, uh, on the first weekend, you got a shot at the end of the day. So, um, we have more and more teachers, uh, utilizing the different sites, uh, and getting vaccinated. So, for our parents, um, working with principals, uh, I think, you know, you could have a, a group of teachers all getting vaccinated on the same day. So, I know the principals are working on some coverage, uh, we do have the ability, if it's a full grade level team, or if it's a whole team of teachers, to utilize remote possibly for that day. Uh, when we have so many teachers out trying to get the vaccination, we definitely wanna support, support them doing so. And then our parents have been great with the flexibility and working with them, so. But we're working on that, and that's a building-based decision, because we have so many teachers going out and getting vaccinated. So, that's one of the, the, the scheduling glitches that, that we may have, if you have, you know, Thursday, we have thirty teachers going to lawn in general to get vaccinated throughout the day, so. Uh, we're working with that, um, but that's all good news, that's the catch-22, with more and more staff getting vaccinated, at the same time, we have to organize, uh, the coverage for the schools during the day. And that's my superintendent update.
Yeah, for a question from Superintendent?
How's the, uh, the pool testing going? Because I know it was today.
Yeah, it's going, yes, it's, um, so we, each, uh, week, we've been increasing classes and teachers. I was talking to Kathy Vick here today, she says, the pilot programs. I was talking to Kathy Vick here today, she says the pilot program, they've been ramping it up and you know, they're doing great, and eventually, I know, with all the tests that that we have could be increasing, like getting everyone tested once a week, so. But people that volunteer don't want to be part of it, so that's, that's really exciting. Because then I think it shifts for teachers that are vaccinated and then we can start focusing on the pool testing to the student population and families, which is free, and so families can take advantage of that every week. No, it does two things, one, it helps all of our families, the people that volunteer, and then two, it allows us to see the prevalence within schools, so.
Right? So that's one, so I'm clarified, the state has not come to terms with its own doctrine about allowing families to choose to be out of school so remotely, but then saying they also have to be taking NCAS tests. But at some point, they're gonna have to come up and say, even if you choose and chose remote, especially at the high school level, because they're still maintaining it as a graduation requirement, all these people are gonna have to bring their kids in for at least that amount of time, correct?
Correct, and I think that's right now, that's what Mr. Wolf and our principals are doing, are creating for the, the students that are at home and are kind of a little anxious on coming back to school, creating, I think, a bigger space and and trying to make the accommodations so that students that are home right now learning, when they come in to take the NCAS test, they feel comfortable, that safety protocols are in place, but it is, it is a major concern. And we haven't really received much, much guidance on that one yet either.
Excellent, um, the last item on the agenda is new business. Does anybody have new business?
I do, two things I want to bring up. One is, it's the, it's a, I don't know if it's an announcement, but it's a, it's a thank you to Sean. The, the website, for the first time that I've noticed, is up to date to the point where since I've been posting agendas and minutes on the, on the Facebook page, I've had to cut and paste them there. But I don't like that system. I would much rather be funneling traffic to the website, but it's never really been organized thoroughly enough. And now that it is, I've started to do just that, so instead of saying, hey, here's the minutes, or here's the agenda, here's the packet, I can just tell people, hey, here's the link to the website, go see it there. And I think what I would love to see, especially if the, the new position plays out, I would love to see kind of all district communication go in that direction. Like I hear a lot, I hear a lot, I read a lot, like on the PTO page, like, you know, I got this email from a principal two weeks ago, and I can't really find this information or that information because we're just scrambling to search through emails. Whereas if people start posting things, like I know it's being done at certain places, but if we grew into that, that just then got parents into the habit of going to the website for information, instead of going to Facebook for information, we'd be in a better place. That's great. That was one thing.
I think it's nice to do a jail for holding all that information.
Yeah, and 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 I agree, I have a great team of people that really concentrating and we're one hundred percent, and that's part of that communications to really have a system so parents and families aren't guessing where to find information, it's gonna be, that's part of our goal with that position, but also people like Joanne, Catherine Page, have really put a concentrated effort in making sure our information, so I can't thank them enough.
And it is a habit, if you gotta get people into, I go to this page on the website, and this is where I see everything the principal has sent out, or like here are the morning announcements, or here, whatever, everything having to do with athletic program, that kind of thing, so people know where to find it, they're not lost, so I think that's great, both on the uploading side and the organization side, that's huge.
Thank you.
I also put together a short letter that I think you guys all saw about approving or supporting mask and mask in their efforts to ask the state to work against having NCAS testing this year. There's also the letter that they put out, I think. I think their system's a little funky, and that letter is dated like February twentieth or something like that. And I found it on Twitter on Thursday. You know, so, and I only found it because Tracy knows that somebody who works for the, for the, for mask posted it. I don't know what it was doing in the three weeks, the interim, but I looked at my email, and we never got a copy of it that I, that I saw, so. Right, so I don't know why it was dated and then waited so long, but now that it's here, I was thinking we could support that.
I mean, I would support it, because I think it's my opinion only, I think it's ridiculous that the state's gonna make it through, I know it's down from the feds. But I mean, you know, with principals doing all they can to make regular learning so important and all the destruction and all of stuff, coupled with the fact that it didn't happen last year. At the end of last year, and we have so many kids being at North Academy, but the numbers are gonna be useless. And I gotta tell you, one, they're delayed to begin with, by the time we find out, it's almost two years after the fact. And and then now, what, what, a hundred forty something kids are doing at North Academy, if they weren't, they don't have to take it, that's but the numbers will be nothing, so, I mean, I don't know if it's more, it's only gonna be symbolic, but I would say.
And I know that's, I mean, even their letter says that, you know, they have to get approval from the feds, like you said, but I know New York has petitioned for a waiver, and I don't think they're allowing that, I forget who the other state is. California. So it was just something I probably get behind.
I would support that as well, are we gonna vote to take the vote, or are we, are you writing a letter?
Um, I, I did draft a short thing, I don't know, Sean, did you get it? I don't have access to the letterhead.
I didn't.
Did I not share it?
Yeah, I didn't.
The letterhead, don't I? No, I yeah, this is just a, you guys probably need time to read this. And I don't mean to rush this through, but because we're not meeting for another three weeks.
Yeah, I took a look at the mask letter that you sent around, I appreciate that. And I had some of the same issues that I had with the previous letter, let me say that the statement of the way that it's laid out, I think is great, I think that the counterpositions reasoning is right on, I think the analysis is right on. And then it's sort of, to me, the letter falls apart at the end. You're not really clearly asking people, you're not really clearly indicating, they're not really clearly indicating what it is that, that we ask, we're asking the state to do, and then what it is that we need to do. You know, and then it goes to that last, in closing, you know you will get from the Secretary of Education, Pfizer, Commissioner Riley, decisions out there. I mean, that's just you know, that that, that kind of framing of, of it, I think it's not helpful. It's basically saying, we need the commissioner to do this, we need your support, encourage the commissioner to move with a waiver, apply for a waiver, and then we also will be contacting our federal representatives to encourage them to support initiative. So, you know, yeah, I just want a letter that basically says, this is what we're asking the state to do. Very clear, not what they're, what we know they're gonna say to us, I mean, that to me is, that's crap.
The, the email that I sent to our state reps, the state board of ed, and our federal politicians was full of the shoulds that I tend to put in my own letters, because I agree, that I think they're being a little wishy washy.
Basically, just lay out what the plan is, what we're asking the state to do, and then what we are gonna do on our own in informing the state, if that's what we're gonna do on our own, is true. You know, so I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm totally good right up until that, you know, the last of those three paragraphs, you know, and then it's that, that particular, that last paragraph, the closing, you know, you were here. Just, just basically saying what we want you to advocate for the state to do, and then what the next step that we need to take is, which is like, again, like we were talking about.
No, Mayor, I sent the mask, because like a three page chart that they, that they sent out.
Like from that Dropbox file that you sent.
Yeah, I sent it, I sent out a bunch of pages ago. This is just something, that's just a summary of the, of the highlight points.
Can we do this?
What?
Can we do this?
Well, that's the one that I was hoping we could sign, it's really just a summary of their main points, but I, I didn't think about it until last night at about ten o'clock, so I didn't.
Can I just read it, the other members of the Newbury Court Mask School Committee and the superintendent of Newbury Court Tools have read your organization's letter to Desi and Commissioner Riley regarding NCAS testing, access testing to Commonwealth students' social and emotional well-being. We are sending this letter to you as a public sign of support for your assertion that spending time and resources on NCAS and access testing, although that has already started in many schools, is not a sound idea of its strength. Instead, it is the work of local districts that will best enable and support teachers' efforts on behalf of all students, academics, and social emotional well-being. Like you, we would like to see NCAS and access, access testing canceled for this year, but agree that a modified process would be better than insisting on full NCAS testing protocols, which will present to all districts with numerous additional hurdles to a school year, but as you know, has already been historically difficult.
That letter goes, who is that going to?
Uh, I thought we sent it to Mask and Mask.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I think that's fine. I would support that letter going to Mask, but it also seems to me like there's another step to take, and that's basically what the state is saying, look, if you know Mask is telling you to do this, we want you to do this, and then to also, as a group, let the feds know that this is.
Storm, storm in the gassup comes next.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought, I thought the reasoning and the analysis was really good. You know, I mean, I, I could get behind that a hundred percent.
I only put two pages there, Mayor, because I didn't know if Sean was gonna sign it or not, so one of them is, the superintendent, they have one.
I got that. Okay.
Will you sign it now? Are you gonna sign this or no? Yeah.
I'll sign it.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. We're all going down together.
You know what, I, I think it's important that all community and the, the educators in the buildings understand that, you know, we get it.
I think we all receive emails from parents who are just coming back to school, you know, and there's just so much going on, and all of a sudden, we're gonna start teaching them how to take a test.
I mean, you know, the wild card here is that there is a sea change in sea right now. You know, a lot of regulations are being revisited in some cases. So I think that there's, there, there might not have been an opportunity, or is an opportunity to encourage the feds to take the decision. But I don't think they would have been.
Feds don't get it, they, they do it every time.
They don't, but, but they.
This time.
They get a, yeah, it's like successive approximation of that. It's like four years of ignorance.
There was never, there was never gonna be an easier decision than this year not doing a test like that is.
Thank you for drafting the statement.
All right, other than the, the main signatures, and we also need to.
I just got an awesome email from the regional plan with a special advance sign up for our teachers, so we're gonna rock it.
All right, going on a high note, I have a motion to adjourn.
Allo, second.
All in favor?